Good evening. Is anyone out there? Good evening. Good. That's the teacher in me to get your attention. And welcome to our, this evening's board meeting. And the school board meeting of January 22nd, 2019 is now called to order. The time is 6:01. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except the special presentations portion of the meeting. The agenda can also be found at the district's website, which is www.lee schools.net. Navigate to the leadership tab and choose School Board. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential. And the district's vision, to be a world-class school system. Once again, Will, you were here before?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you weren't here when I was here, so welcome.
Thank you.
All right, once again, we have Will Holderfield is this evening's student representative for the school board, Student Advisory Committee. He's a senior at South Fort Myers High School. In his spare time, Will enjoys hanging out with friends and volunteering around the community, having contributed over 1,800 hours of community service. He is a member of many clubs such as Keep Lee County Beautiful and is a member of Emeritus with Distinction and formerly the Sergeant at Arms for Student Advisory Council. Will also established and is the director of the Student Athletes Volunteers Association. He is a member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, chairman and founder of the PAC Leadership Committee, as well as the National Honor Society's Public Relations Officer. He's shaking his head, am I reading it right? This is a lot. Will also works at Lee County's parks and rec- recreation. His future plans include earning a bachelor's degree in secondary education and social science. Yay, Will, a teacher! Yes! Yes! Let's grow your own right there. And education in social science and a master's degree in education administration. I'll lend you my notes when you're ready for that.
Thank you.
Okay. And a doctorate in educational policies with a concentration in education administration. He would like to become a high school administrator and then work for the state. No, you're not leaving the county. And federal government on policies and laws on education, maybe even becoming U.S. Undersecretary of Education, as well as still helping in the community. Welcome back, Will. It's great to have you. Okay, first, we have the approval of the agenda. This evening's agenda will include the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, three recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include eight items under executive services, six under academic services, and five items under business services, four items under human resources, one of which is good cause. And Dr. Atkins, please provide an explanation for this item.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, we have two good cause items that we will bring before the board today. One is the approval of an administrative transfer and change of assignment for an individual that we're going to name as principal at Tree Line Elementary because of the retirement of Kelly Thornton. The second one is a good cause item for the approval of MMM High School Wetland Mitigation Credits. If the board and district move forward at this time, we are able to take advantage of the lower 2018 amount, $95,000 per credit. So that would save the district $142,400 if we're acting in January. So that is the reason, sent information on both these items to the board over the weekend and plan to bring them good cause tonight.
Okay, as presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add these items to the agenda. And we'll also have four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? I can't speak.
So move.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
Second.
And a second? Okay. Let's see where we are. Oh, sorry, we need to do a vote. Okay.
The second was Mrs. Fisher.
Oh, I'm sorry. And the second was Ms. Fisher. And all those, and please do the vote, it's online, so... Let's see if they sped it up this way.
Okay, so now it's asking me for a vote?
I believe, is that it up there?
It's doing it.
You got it.
Am I not seeing it? It was moved in second, did everyone vote? Oh, there it is. Okay, and it passes 7-0. And the motion carries. Ms. Fisher will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Morgan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And please rise for the invocation. Thank you.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here this day. We ask you for your blessing on all here present. Please guide and direct this meeting so that it is full of wisdom and productivity. Help us to work with responsibility, to develop strong relationships with our Lee County community, and to have respect for one another. Inspire us to make decisions which will benefit our school community. You are the source of all blessings. Please bless and protect our students, staff, and family with health, happiness, and peace of mind and heart. For this and all your gifts, we praise and thank you. Amen.
And Ms. Morgan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Debt presenting the national colors tonight will be introduced by Lieutenant Colonel Mario Johnson, Army Instructor of the JROTC Program at Dunbar High School. Lieutenant Colonel Johnson entered the Army in 1991 as an infantry officer. His service includes three tours at Operation Enduring Freedom. Lieutenant Colonel Johnson started working as a JROTC Senior Army Instructor at Dunbar High School in August 2015.
Thank you. The national colors will be presented tonight by Cadet Jalisha Norris, the Dunbar High School Junior ROTC Brigade Commander. Cadet Norris, a senior from Dunbar High School, has been a member of the drill and raider team for the past four years. Jalisha has a weighted GPA of 4.6 and is a member of the National Honor Society. Upon graduation, Cadet Norris will be joining the United States Marine Corps. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Not us.
For the board, we are going to go down.
I would like the following individuals from Island Coast High School to please join me at the lectern. Mr. Jeffrey Becker, Digital Media Technology Teacher, apologize, and Principal Dr. Michelle Court. I would like Dr. Wanda Creel, Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Sherri Freeman, Executive Director of School Development, also to join me. And family. What's her name?
Sophie.
And Sophie. Sophie's here with us. And the rest of the family. Morgan and Megan?
Morgan and Henry.
Morgan and Henry. The Lee County Teacher of the Year program provides an opportunity to recognize instructional personnel who fosters excellence in education, provide local and district leadership, and have a proven record of superior teaching, as evidenced by student performance. This recognition celebrates the contributions of teachers who demonstrates the ability to inspire a love of learning in students of all backgrounds and abilities. Mr. Becker serves as Digital Media Technology Teacher at Island Coast High School. His commitment to his students expands well beyond the classroom. He believes every student's potential to make a difference, and he nurtures student-teacher relationships to help students paint the best picture of themselves. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize Mr. Jeffrey Becker as the Lee County School District 2018-2019 Teacher of the Year. And if we could have everybody come over here and...
Absolutely.
...for pictures?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Sir. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you so much, sir.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
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 I would like the following individuals to join me at the lectern, please. Dr. Wanda Creel, Chief Academic Officer, Mr. Ashley Lamar, Principal of Calusa Elementary.
I'm here in this place.
Excellent, come on up. Ms. Karen Manzi, Principal of Fort Myers Beach Elementary, and Mr. Robert Mizoli, Principal of Edgewood Academy. Thank you. There are many valuable people who volunteer their services in our district every single day. I think it's appropriate, on the heels of our description of Wolfpack Will, that we're awarding volunteers today, given his amazing volunteerism in our community. They assist teachers and students in the classroom on athletic fields and in media centers. These volunteers, in giving of their time, touch the lives of students and truly make a difference in our schools and community. Each year, the Florida Department of Education invites each school district to nominate an outstanding school volunteer in each of three categories: senior, adult, and youth. Their names are then submitted to the Department of Education for consideration for regional winner status. The willingness of these individuals to unselfishly give of their time, talents, and resources to serve as school volunteers is greatly appreciated. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize this year's outstanding school volunteers. As I call your name, please come forward. Youth volunteer, Isabella Lausen, if I ruined your name, I'm sorry. How do I say your name?
Lozone.
Lozone, thank you, who is a student at Calusa Middle School and volunteers at Calusa Adult category, Shannon... Should we do it all at once or one at a time? I have it here as all at once. Adult category, Shannon Orlandi, who volunteers at Fort Myers Beach Elementary. And in the senior category, Gladys Vanderbeck, who volunteers at Edgewood Academy. Adult category, Shannon Orlando, who volunteers at Fort Myers Beach Elementary. And in the senior category, Gladys Vanderbeck, who volunteers at Edgewood Academy.
the lectern, but she's beat me to it, so. The intent of the School of Improvement and Accountability legislation to improve Florida's schools by returning the responsibility for education to those close to the students, the schools, teachers, and parents. Recognizing that involvement of the community is vital to student success, the Commissioner of Education and the Commissioners Community Involvement Council established the Five-Star School Award, the highest award for community involvement. To qualify for the award, a school must achieve 100% of its, of the required criteria and provide a portfolio that documents the achievement of criterion in the following areas: business partnership, family involvement, volunteers, student community service, and the School Advisory Council. This evening, we are pleased to recognize and extend congratulations to 19 schools that met the strenuous requirements to receive the Five-Star Award for the 2017-18 school year. As I announce the names of the schools, I would like for the representatives from each to come forward for a group picture with the board members and superintendent. The first school is Bay Shore Elementary. The second school is Bonita Springs Charter. Calusa Middle. Cypress Lake High School. Franklin Park Elementary. G Weaver Hips Elementary. Hancock Creek Elementary. Ida Baker, Ida S. Baker High. J. Colan English Elementary. Lehigh Elementary. Lehigh Acres Elementary, I mean, excuse me, Lehigh Acres Middle. North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts. Pelican Elementary. St. Carlos Park Elementary. Tanglewood Elementary. Three Oaks Elementary. Three Oaks Middle. Veteran Park Academy for the Arts. And Villas Elementary. A great, applaud for all. Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Okay, I'll take this back. Yep, thank you very much.
I knew they were going to call me.
I hate to say this part, but we will take a brief recess so that if you want to leave, but it's going to be very interesting just to be here with us, so we ask you to stay. But we'll take a brief recess while anyone that wants to leave may do so. And thank you for coming.
Today was the lady that's here a lot of times.
You know what, if it was just, you know how you have the flaps at home? If there were flaps... Are we ready? Okay, we will reconvene our meeting January 22nd. And the next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Dodik, would you please read and address the agenda item, public comment?
Certainly will. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the cards submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Gittens, the board chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. Time per speaker is three minutes. Madam Chair, I have seven cards.
Okay, thank you. And before calling those card requests, is there anyone on my left that would like to speak that has not done a card? Do we have, please state your name. Jamie Michael. Anyone else on the left? Anyone on the right that has not turned in a card that wants to speak?
Yep Ram Durvanian. Excuse me for the mispronunciation. Okay.
School meetings off and on for a few years. My, one comment is, first of all, I love my country but fear my government. And the first thing I want to talk about is this sales tax committee. I think the people you pick is ridiculous. Conflict of interest with every one of these people. I had people that were interested to get on this board, that would have done a good job, and they're not even considered. But you pick all the big shots, all the people of conflicts of interest, they own property, they want to sell your property, maybe they're bankers, they want to make you loans, it's a bunch of crap. You're picking the good guys to take care of one another. One guy knows the other guy, you know, construction, I'll give a contract to this guy, don't like who you pick, did a terrible job, shame on you. Second thing I want to talk about is, I think Dr. Atkins is doing a below-average job. He got a big pay raise. There's a few things that he's done through the years that I've come, these meetings off and on, and I'm not happy with. I'm not going to bring it all up, because there's a few of it. And I think maybe he's trying to do the best he can, but I'm not happy with what he's done. I'm not happy with this Board, the new members, can't say much about them, but we got to get it together. If you disagree with Dr. Atkins, speak about it. Don't be afraid, don't all say we got to agree on everything. I want to hear from these new people and the old people. If you don't like what he's doing, say what you don't want to say, say what you want to say. And don't say we have to all agree on everything. Thank you for listening, appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ray Troy. It's hard to read your writing, sir, I'm sorry. Okay. Is that your name?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
My name's Ray Troy, I live in North Fort Myers. I have four questions I'd like the Board to answer after the public comments are all done. What is the status of the lawsuit that you have against the state at this time? And I'd like you to know that charter schools are schools that operate at a profit. So I'd like to know how much money you've given to charter schools last year? I understand it's over $6 million, over $60 million. Do you have a plan for charter schools whenever they foreclose? Do we get our taxpayers' money back, or do we not? And how much local taxes, the taxes that you raise on the school board? How much of that taxes did the state keep after they reviewed your budget and sent it back to you for approval? How much of that local taxes money did they put in the general budget of the state? That is taxpayers' money for Lee County, not for the state. The state did it last year to balance their budget. I'd like you to know, I'd like to have your answers on how you feel on these, because we're in television and a lot of people that's watching television that can't come to school board meetings, they'd like to hear your answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Matthew Morrell.
My name is Matthew Morrell, and I am the band director at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. I've been in my current location for nine years for several reasons. First of all, the kids, of course, but also due to the amazing support that I get from my administration, bar none, some of the best in Lee County. I'm here today to share with you some of the awesome things that are happening at PLDMs and our arts programs. One of the beliefs that is key, is a key component of our school's culture, is that students have a place to connect and have a feeling of belonging, which, as you know, with our current societal climate and culture, connecting and belonging have become part of the district's initiative as we work towards improving and recognizing mental health as part of our district's safety plan. This has become a crucial part of our philosophy as arts teachers. While we encourage students to find their place to belong in our community, we also push them with rigorous instruction that meets students where they currently are and grow them into the artists, actors, musicians, that are ready for whatever high school curriculum they choose. We strive to encourage students to be well-rounded citizens of their community that participate in the arts and utilize the skills they learned in their, our classes in their other classes. By the numbers, we are soaring. Twenty-two of the 28 students in the All County Band were PLDMs students, one all-state trumpet player. The National Association of Music Merchants recently awarded the prestigious designation of one of the nation's best communities for music education. We lead the district with our production, we led the district with our production of Lion King two years ago, developing costumes and sets that other schools have rented for their own productions in the past two years. This year, we will top that performance with our performance of Aladdin. In the visual arts, our students have, work has been on display on the district holiday card, at the airport, and around all of these hallways, and has won competition after competition throughout the county. One of my favorite things in our art department is our permanent collection of things that all sit on the wall from students throughout years of, since the building was opened. By these recognitions only capture part of our success, we are much more than all of those numbers. The growth and success of our program is due to the undying support of administration and excited students and parents, and these students who want to learn a new craft. Currently, PLDMs arts programs serve over half of our population, and we are coming up with new ways to reach each student. One of our current innovative ways that we're doing this is theater two students have joined forces with our TV production program. In a new curriculum where for one semester the students are actors working on a film script, while the other half of the students are film crew. The second semester's the students flip places so they get to see both sides of production. All of our arts are tiered by ability.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next is Autumn Rhodes.
Hello, my name is Autumn Rhodes, and I play French horn and trumpet at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. In this band program, we have five different bands with varying skill sets and experience. Every student has a place in our program. Throughout the three years students attend PLDMs, they are able to transform from never picking up an instrument to being in a top band and being a master at that instrument. As a member of the PLDMs music program, I have been, I have been given several opportunities to develop myself as a musician. These include MPA, or Musical Performance Assessment, where we are able to be judged as a band and use that information to grow as a class. And sew an ensemble, where students can pick a piece and perform individually in front of a panel of judges and get a personal rating. Both allows to grow as people and as a family. The environment in the PLDMs bandroom is always welcoming and positive. Mr. Morrell, our band teacher, is always working incredibly hard to help us achieve our goals. Many students in the different bands PLDMs offers have banned as their primary elective. For most students, the band, the band classroom is a safe haven where they are able to be surrounded by a loving community in which they are able to escape everyday life. Band is a constant, is constantly a place of growth and acceptance. The bandroom has played a big role in my personal development. Band has taught me that practice makes perfect. In order to master an instrument, it takes constant practice, aside from band rehearsal every other day. Band has also taught me about working with others to make beautiful music. Collaborating with your fellow bandmates is not, is essential not only in the classroom but everyday life as well. Finally, the program has taught me the importance of family. The classmates are my family, and the bandroom is my home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Applause, thanks.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Cosby, and I am the Junior Thespian's President for Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. And I am here to talk about our program and the opportunities we provide in theater. For our theater class, we talk, we start at the beginning level where we learn the basics of theater and can move up two levels from there. In the first level of the theater program, we have the chance to perform a play our classmates write in the Theater One playwright showcase. In the second level of theater, we act or do behind-the-scenes work like sets, costume, makeup, and editing for a film made by our Level Two class. In the third level, we put on one full-length play and one musical ushered by anyone in a theater class who wants to volunteer their time. We also do an annual haunted walk. And for any students who like performance arts, we have an annual 24-hour film festival lock-in. If we do enough inside and outside of school theater, we can get into Junior Thespians, where we go to districts and states and compete against other middle schools in the district. We also have drama club, where we play theater games and for those, for those who don't necessarily want to be in a theater class but still enjoy theater. As you can see, there are many opportunities for students interested in the performing arts. I know the arts program has definitely impacted me in many ways. My grades have improved and my confidence has grown. I am able to be a part of something and have something to look forward to, and I can experience friendly competition, like going for something and supporting others going for the same. Theater is a good opportunity to experience how it feels to see the outcome of something we've worked hard on to accomplish, and to work with people with different personalities and characteristics. It has helped me grow as a person. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, members of the Board. Yesterday, we celebrated one of the greatest leaders our nation has ever produced, Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King had a quote that I loved, he had two. One was, he talked about, "You have to have a person who makes words to take a crooked tongue and make them speak straight words." You know, it's so interesting, as we celebrated Dr. King, there's been some stuff going on with the school district that I wanted to bring up. I had the opportunity to go to the school board workshop the other day, and at the meeting they were having a discussion in the room over there about the, what was it about? It was about the raises that Atkins gave. And Dr. Atkins, as the Chair of the Board, Gwen, was talking, he interrupted her, and right in front of the television cameras and right while the Board members was there. And I told Mary and Melissa that I felt not only embarrassed for Gwen, but I felt embarrassed for them as Board members for sitting there and allowing what happened to transpire. What the superintendent did was he interrupted the Chairman of the School Board and told her in front of the television cameras and in front of her colleagues, "Stop. Let me tell you what's the real truth." And then he went on to take the floor from her and talk. Now, I'm sitting there saying, now, I've been around this place a long time, I've never seen a superintendent interrupt a Board Chair and talk down to her and say that he's going to correct her in front of everybody. There has been, since Gwen got elected, a cabal of people led by certain people on the Board who've wanted to embarrass her at every turn. When she makes a little small misstep at the Board table, you see the snickering, you see the games that are being played. From day one, before Gwen got elected on the Board, the President of the Teachers' Union said to the newspaper, "Well, we can't have people that have personal vendettas on our school board, we need people who care about children." There was another meeting not too long ago, Jamie Michaels, the President of the General Employees' Union, got up at this meeting and said, "Well, we can't have people with vendettas." So what I want the people to understand that has been going on, is this cabal of people who are doing this, they want to silence Gwen. What they want to do, and you hear it, I was at a workshop where Kathleen Morgan brought up an idea about being able to censor Board members. What we see is people who want to paint Gwen as an angry black woman. She's mad because she sued the school district, and then they settled and she got elected to the Board, and she has a vendetta against the superintendent. I have to give Kathleen Morgan kudos. She was able, through her email, to intimidate this Board into not doing what they need to do, which is to get us and to move us in a different direction, get us a new superintendent. So kudos, Kathleen, you outsmarted everyone, you showed why you've been the most cunning, intelligent person on the Board. As a person who's a student of political science, I admire that. Thank you.
Lou Navarro, Cape Coral, good evening, Board. Superintendent Atkins, the news press says the Board's off to a shaky start. I agree. Though, let's talk about the half a cent sales tax. You know, when I went into Wawa, I paid 7%. You never said in any of your campaign that we had to pay on the odd numbers a half a cent more. And the people in Wawa don't like that either. So I want to know where my half a cent is going, because I only agreed to pay 6.5%, and I want my half a cent back. That was really slick. No one ever mentioned that. I'm, I've got the pictures here of the signs, I know the contractors paid for that. Vote yes, and all you show is a half a cent tax. You don't show a round up to 7%. That's wrong. One's for the superintendent, and one I said to Gwen, "Love Lou, there, we'll get them to you." So, I want to know where the money's going, because I want it back. I don't feel like paying 7% for a cup of coffee, and Wawa will raise the price anyway. New Board and Chairman, Madam Chairman, it's time to step up and take charge of these It's just kind of sad. So I expect this new Board to take charge now. I think we've namby-pamby'd around enough, and we went and helped most of you to get elected. Communications. I applied for the Committee for the Tax Watch Dogs. I never heard a thing. Good practice and professionalism would have been nice to at least get a, we didn't pick you, Lou. You weren't going to pick me anyway, anyway, you know what I mean? I thought good communications was the cornerstone of my defunct campaign. I heard, "Well, you were a subteacher." Well, when you pay the subteachers social security instead of BenCor, pay them a decent wage, give them an opportunity for benefits, I would consider myself an employee then. But I think we need more communications, and we don't have it. And transparency, I want my half a cent back. You find it for me where it's going. I expect an answer. I'm going to talk about the future of privatization, like Duval County, in my next talk. I see too much waste, employees hanging out, petty thievery. Also, I've been working with Dany.
Time's up, sir. Your time's up. Ms. Michael?
Thank you very much. Good evening, I'm Jamie Michael, I'm President of the Support Personnel Association, and this is Superintendent and the Board. Thank you for all you do, you have hard jobs, every one of you. Good evening, Spock would like to share some good news with you. We have many hard-working folks across this district, whether they're support, teachers, administrators, the Board, we all work hard. The Support Association of Lee County has nominated a Buckinghamshire Heather Tuttle for the National Association's ESP of the Year Award. ESP stands for Educational Support Professional. We were just informed today that Heather is one of the finalists for the state of Florida. She is the only finalist for Lee County. Heather will attend the Florida Education's Association's Governance Meeting in two weekends. If chosen by the Committee, Heather will attend the National Association's Conference where the nationwide ESP will be named. Heather is a phenomenal asset to Lee County schools, and we're so proud. We're proud of every support employee in this district. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, well, let's begin. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, and I know I'm going to mess up the name, Mr. Durpania? Okay, thank you. You talked about conflict of interest on the advisory boards. We had a discussion last week in one of our meetings about the advisory boards, and we are looking at a few changes. are looking at a few changes that will be made. There are some districts that aren't represented at this time, and we are alleviating that. And everyone needs to understand, especially with the Oversight Committee that was done. One thing the public and those that are watching online need to realize, when we put out the hue and cry for people to join the committee, we need people to follow through and to do the applications and to complete them. The more applications we have, the better chance we have of selecting the best people. And we, like I said, we are looking at the advisory boards and the different memberships that are on there for different areas, and that is being taken care of. I also wanted to tell you, and everyone, we have workshop meetings, we have briefing meetings, we have executive meetings, and we have action meetings. And we have different venues and times that we discuss issues and get information from each other and from staff, and at some of them, there is public comment. But those are the meetings where we get information, and then we make decisions. It may seem like if all you ever come to is the action meeting, it seems like we just sit here and go, everyone want to vote on something? Everybody say aye, and everybody say nay. That is not it. There's a lot of work that goes behind that before we get there. Mr. Troy. Dr. Atkins, can you address his question on the lawsuit against the state, the charter school, and local tax?
I'll let our attorney.
Sure.
... the lawsuit, which would be appropriate, so he can do that for you.
In fact, the gentleman and I spoke before the meeting. Currently, the lawsuit against the State Department of Education filed by the representative districts is before the First District Court of Appeals. We have appealed the decision of the lower tribunal. The case briefs have been filed. We are now entitled to file what's called a reply brief to the state's brief. The due date for that reply brief is February 1st, so that will be filed in the next few days by our counsel. Our counsel is Brannick and Humphreys, a law firm from Orlando. And I would anticipate oral arguments taking place sometime probably in the spring, and then possibly having a decision from the appellate court in the early summer in that case right now, absent any other delays that might occur. So, that's the status of the lawsuit.
So, basically, we're still involved?
Yes.
Okay. That's basically what they want to know. Dr. Atkins, the other ones?
Well, as to the rest of the questions, I would first of all caution us, just if we get an information request, just to throw out numbers. We want to give accurate numbers.
Exactly.
So, if we would like me to go do that, I'd be more than happy and bring that back at a future time. And relative to the question about amount of money given to charter schools, that's a moving target based on FTE and a number of other factors. Local taxes, and did the state keep? I think that's a reference to the fact that we are a donor district, and again, that's a great place for like a budget workshop to talk about those type of things, which we often do. And then a plan when charter schools close, do we get dollars back? That is dependent, and I will tell you, though, our experience has been it's very difficult for us to get dollars back from charter schools. So, just to give you kind of a real-world example, you know, we hope that the current situation we're involved in, we don't have to see that happen where we have a school close in the middle of the year. It's one of the worst things that can happen. But we have seen a decline in enrollment from October to now. Those dollars are very difficult for us to come back, because we're paying out at the October FTE. So, we don't have another FTE until February. In addition to that, one of the cautions that we talked about when we, in fact, in some of our concerns with some of the legislation that we've seen proposed recently, is if we give dollars for capital expenditures, sometimes they lease buildings. We're unable to get those dollars back if one of those schools close. So, this is an issue that is, I think, a relevant issue. It is, as I've said before, very difficult. We can provide you a little bit more information about that. I know Mr. McCullers probably is even more, definitely more familiar with some of the ins and outs of these closures, but we can provide that to the board at a different time.
Okay. And we have Mr. Troy's blue card, that if there's any more information, we can contact and give him further information. Thank you. Mr. Merle, are you still here? Did he leave? Okay. I wanted to tell him thank you for the good news. There is good news out there. Thank you for saying that. And we are all very proud of the Dunbar Middle Music Program and hope to see the arts to flourish, not only at Dunbar Middle, but at all of our schools. And he knew the trick. If you really want to sell something, you have kids tell us. That's the lasting thing. And thank you to Autumn and Jasmine for your presentations. You were very eloquent and very brave. Anthony, the MLH, oh, sorry, the Martin Luther King celebrations were wonderful. I took part in several of the events, and I'll tell you more about that later. As far as the workshop, and I'll just tell you how I felt. It was a workshop that had a lot of people thinking, oh, you know, we're going to do fireworks and all kinds of things were going to happen. In the very beginning, I said, just like I say all the time, workshops are to gather information. They don't, we don't vote in them, we don't make any decisions in them. And sometimes, if you believe very strongly in something and someone believes another way, there can be that yin and yang. But that's why we have the workshop, so that we know how each other feels. And we did a lot of discussion and finding out things, and we will continue to do that. I was not embarrassed. I don't get embarrassed that easily. I knew, taking this job, and then when I was elected to chair, it was not going to be easy. And like they say, you can't make all the people happy all the time. And sometimes, you can't make any of them happy, but that's on a bad day. I know that things will happen. I know we have different personalities. We are seven people on this board, and we all have different experiences and backgrounds that make us who we are, and along with the superintendent and the attorney. So, at times, we're going to disagree. But when we leave the room, we have gotten to some type of common ground, and that's what we look for. Each one of us represents a different portion of this county, and we are adamant about our piece of Lee County and the things that we want for our constituents. So, sometimes, we will go in there like the mother bear and say, okay, well, this needs to happen and that needs to happen. But one thing everyone needs to understand, and this leads into Mr. Navara as well, things don't happen overnight. And for true and proper change to happen, we must have the right decisions. And in order to do that, you have to do it professionally. You have to do things in order. There is a process. We have procedures for the things that we do. And so, I've gotten a lot of emails from people, okay, we voted you in, so now get it done. Whatever it is, it will take time. Things take time. We are making the best decisions for the children of Lee County, and we will continue, as I speak for all of the other six of us, to do that, to put children first. And one of the things that we're doing to increase our, I just lost the word. What's the word?
Transparency.
Thank you. You knew I was kind of saying transparency, as we decided this afternoon at a meeting, that all of our meetings will be in this room. Now, the rationale for that is that in this room, there's the camera set up, and everything can be televised live. All of our workshop meetings at the present time are taped, and you can see them the next day. The one we had this morning will be available tomorrow morning on our website, and I mentioned that at the beginning. So, we are working under the sunshine. We are letting you know everything we do. And in future, like I said, all of our workshops will be in here. You can come and join us, or you can sit at home in the comfort of your home. And then come and let us know what you think. Give us ideas if you think we're doing something that should be different, and we'll take it into consideration. And I thank you all. Oh, and Ms. Michael, lastly, please give Heather our congratulations, and she is going to represent us well, I'm very sure. Thank you so much for those that attended and participated in the meeting. Now, we move on to the approval of consent action items. Action items in the agenda under consent. And I believe, one of the things we were talking about with transparency is letting you know what it is that we are voting on. And just as a teaching moment, we have all these consent items that are up there. We know, because we have to read and look at each one of these items, and then we have a time that we can get questions to the superintendent or to staff if we have questions about them. There's a lot of things on there, but we have the opportunity, in representing you, to look at those items and say, okay, well, I have a question about this, or why does this work this way? So, when you see this long list, it's not just, okay, one big mass of things. We know exactly what's up there. And if you want to know what's exactly up there, come to the workshops, come to the briefings, or watch it online, and then you'll understand. At this meeting, an action meeting, we will just vote on them as a whole. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to board meeting. We're expected to review all the material. We have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent and ask questions regarding recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshop with the board in advance, appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business or table items? Ms. Fisher?
I have no pulls this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Juvenelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
No, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent items with no exceptions?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. The motion by Ms. Fisher and approved by Ms. Juvenelli, please record your vote. And I always say, this is like watching paint dry. Sorry about that. Has everyone voted? And the motion passes 7-0. Dr. Atkins, would you please read your recommend... Oh, no, there's no pulled items, so, okay, I'm sorry. Included in the approval of consent items on the agenda are the following resolutions. January 20th to 26th, 2019 is National School Choice Week. This is always interesting to me that everybody has a week or a day. I don't know who decides it where, but it just happens. January 28th to February 1st, Celebrate Literacy Week, Florida. February 2019 as Career and Technical Education Month. February 2019 as National Black History Month. February 4th through the 8th, 2019 is National School Counseling Week, as well as February 5th through the 7th, 2019 as Drug House Odyssey, a Lee County prevention event. Dr. Atkins, please introduce any administrators in attendance with new assignment that were approved under the consent item.
Ms. Madam Chair, I have two this evening. The first one is Michelle Mel, Tropic Isles Elementary School Intervention Specialist to River Hall Elementary Assistant Principal. And the second item was one of our Good Cause items. It's, I am happy to present Jennifer Wilkin, Diplomat Elementary Assistant Principal to Principal, Tree Line Elementary.
We have no attorney's recommendations, no public hearings. We'll move on to other business. I'm sorry, when do we do, is your Good Cause at the end?
No, that was, they drop into the consent agenda.
He dropped it in. Okay. All right. I thought I missed something. Okay. So, now we come to the part of board comments and reports, and Ms. Fisher, you're up.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to comment on the Martin Luther King Unity Breakfast yesterday at Sidney and Byrne Davis Hall. It was an amazing event, well-attended. Happy to say that all of my colleagues and I had an opportunity to be there. And I want to especially congratulate the winners of the 2019 Keeper of the Dream Awards, and that was Melvin Morgan, Abdul Haq Mohammed, Johnny Streets, and Walt Wesley. Well-deserving and people who have contributed much to this community. I was really happy to hear the happy news from Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School, and just wanted to mention that Autumn and Jasmine did a great job, and Autumn is a former member of our Student Advisory Committee, so we're really proud of her. And I just want to thank everyone who took the time to come this evening, and I want to say that it's an honor to serve with this board.
Thank you. Ms. Juvenelli?
I just also wanted to congratulate all the winners for the Science Fair this weekend that I attended and the Inventors' Fair. It was a great experience, and I encourage others to, they have it annually, so I encourage others to attend. And I want to congratulate Nikita Watson for the Presidential Honoree Award. That was also, I got to meet her yesterday, and so that was awesome. Thank you. That's it.
And Ms. Patrica?
Wolf Packwell.
Hello.
Hello. I look at, where did it go? I mean, seriously, this is, do you see? Single space? Well, not single space, double space, but this is what this young man has accomplished, and it's, I guarantee you, not everything. I feel like a slug compared to you, and I'm pretty busy. So, your future is very, very bright. And every time I'm in your presence, I learn something new. You are not only an active and contributing member of the Student Advisory Committee, but you're also the Student Advisory Committee liaison to the Finance Advisory Committee.
I am, yes.
And I believe that staff will echo that your voice really is important to us there. You brought to light some issues with regard to technology last week. They were taken very seriously, and they will be addressed. And I just, you give me hope for the future, and you're the reason why we sit in these seats and put up with some of the stuff that we put up with and fight with each other to do the best thing for kids. Just thank you, and best of luck. And please stay in touch with us, because I know your future's bright. I just, I need to be in a good mood every once in a while, and I know where you're going will put us in a good mood, so.
Your ma'am.
Thank you. Really, thank you. The other thing is, Mr. Troy, I would love to discuss with you becoming active with us in terms of legislative advocacy, because several of the issues you raised are certainly issues that we, as a district, face and would like to change at a state level. Many of the issues you raised, our hands are tied because of those state statutes. So, I'd like to get with you after the meeting, give you my card. Maybe we could sit down. I'm the legislative liaison for the board, and I'd like to invite you to become part of that process. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Okay. Well, I as well had the opportunity to participate in the Martin Luther King events all weekend. That's why I have a sunburn. But it was just, the community was out there full force. It was, every event was packed, and it was definitely great events. I also wanted to tell everybody to know that I attended the Northford Myers Academy of the Arts Production of Willy Wonka, and this was the elementary children, and they were just fabulous. And listening to Paul Lawrence, which, I'm going to have to start going to Aladdin and all those, I'm ready to go there, because the arts definitely are part of our lives and our children's lives, and it does make them well-rounded. And I do believe that we need to make sure that we support the arts. And the kids speaking, that says it all, you know how they feel. Mr. Troy, I know you, and you have a lot to offer from your past experience, and yes, we welcome what you say. we welcome what you say. So thank you for that. And again, we're all working together to, you know, for the better cause of the children, and we will all continue to do that, and thank you all for being here.
Okay. And Ms. Vaughn?
I want to thank the teacher, Mr. Morell, and Autumn and Jasmine for coming out and talking about the arts. This really echoes something from our last school board meeting, where we had a teacher advocating for his art, the arts program at his school. And I just want to reiterate my feeling as a former literature teacher, that whereas STEM often comes to the forefront as, you know, the way to go, I much prefer to hear us talk about STEAM, which adds the A in STEM. And of course, that's for the arts. And I as well, with my colleagues, enjoyed the Unity Breakfast. It's always wonderful to get out into the community in that kind of atmosphere, where you can just be with people and greet them in a different venue than, you know, coming here to the boardroom. And thank you all for coming out tonight and reiterating what several of my colleagues have said, that there are so many opportunities to be involved with the school district. Just investigate some of the ways that you can volunteer or apply to be on some of the committees. Thank you.
And Ms. Morgan?
I have nothing to add to what's already been said. Thank you. It's kind of hard to say.
Okay. In the control room, can you put up my picture, please, that I asked? Some of them stole my thunder a little bit. However, I wanted to make sure that we recognize, and she's in the audience, please stand up, Ms. Watson, and congratulations, we are a winner. Ms. Watson spoke at the gala on Saturday night, and she was excellent talking about education. So thank you so much for that. I too went to FGCU to the Inventors' Fair, and I was just blown away. The kids were awesome, and they were so excited about their projects. If you ever get a chance to do that, it just will revive your love for what kids are doing and just letting them go and let their minds just go as far as they can. It was really excellent. This was a busy week. I haven't figured out yet how to say no. So I was, the joke is that the mayor and I have decided we're eating our way through Lee County, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and we'll walk along the way. Let people know, I was really impressed with the positive information from Paul Lawrence Dunbar. I mean, everybody's got an opinion and a thought about things. That podium is not just only for saying what you don't like, it's also for what you like, and it's also for the good things. We're publicized on the internet. Let people know the good things that you're doing, and let's spread some of that out in the community as well. And my last thing I will say is that the reason I have this lighthouse up here is because someone is always watching. We are always influencing some child, some adult, and we will continue to do that in the way that we run the board for Lee County Schools and do what's best for children. May I have a motion if there's no other business?
No.
I'm sorry. I forgot.
First, Will.
Oh, yes, I forgot, Will.
Yeah, I know, Will, I was going to say.
Will, please tell us.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for, again, allowing me one last time before I graduate to sit upon you. It is an extraordinary honor, as it always has been. I want to, I just want to take a minute to thank my school board advisory committee that takes time out of their week every month to sit in that room, actually, right there in the room next door, to find the information that they have dealing with the school, not just problems, but solutions that they have that they want to present to the school board at the end of the year. And I want to thank them for their extraordinary leadership and abilities to help their community. Also, I want to thank the extraordinary volunteers of this community, because I know I'm a big believer that a community is nothing without its volunteers. And as you can see, I've contributed just a little bit to my community, but, and I expect everyone in their lifetime to at least contribute once. I would like to also thank Autumn, one of my fellow former advisory committee members, for her amazing speech along with her friend and her band director. And I will also thank Mr. Carlo, who was my fellow liaison for the Financial Advisory Committee, for what he stepped up and spoke on at the last Financial Advisory Committee meeting last week on the 14th. I want to thank you again, Ms. Patrica, for talking about me. I mean, it's just an extraordinary honor to sit in front of you guys and let me speak and be a humble voice and whatever else you need me to be in our community. Thank you. And thank you again, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Dotick, Ms. Johnson. Thank you all. I'm sorry about that.
Mr. Dotick, any comments?
It's difficult to follow. I just have a self-correction. I said our appellate counsel, Brannick and Humphreys, is located in Orlando. They're actually located in Tampa, so I just wanted to correct myself from earlier. That's all. Thank you.
And Dr. Atkins?
Just a couple of things. One, I just wanted to point out, some of you may have picked up on this, but Autumn also sat in this chair at one point, and I think we were all quite amazed by her accomplishments as well. So, you know, that student advisory committee is comprised of a bunch of amazing students, and if you really want to feel good about the school district and what the kids are accomplishing, just hang by that committee, and you'll certainly
Absolutely.
...get your bucket filled. I also, you know, I'm real happy to see the arts on display at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. That was, while it tended to be tagged as a gifted center, and when we had the talented and gifted program, you know, one of the things that really didn't often get recognized was the amazing things that continue to go on there in the arts. And I'm so thrilled to see that tradition just continue to blossom to this day. And you'll see that also in a lot of our other schools. So I like the word out there to get, you know, get some, bring that positive, those positive messages forward, so the board and the public are aware of the amazing things that are going on across this district. I was very happy to see all board members that were at the breakfast. I mean, we had a full team there. I think that sends a strong message. It was a wonderful event. Mr. Eadie has a little involvement in that, and in years past, has been totally involved in that. So he and the alphas do an extraordinary job of putting that on. And then finally, I just want to thank board members for attending the Science Fair and the Inventors' Fair. It is another place to see some amazing things that our kids do that doesn't always get a lot of board visitation, so I'm very happy to see that we had some of our board members that went out there and even participated as a judge. I mean, that's pretty cool. So thank you for doing that, and that's, those are all my comments for this evening.
Okay. Thank you, U.S. Secretary of Education, for being here. Appreciate that. And I did forget to mention that Ms. Watson was a teacher, then an AP, and now she is the principal of Leah Akers Middle School.
Yes.
That's doing great things, and thank you.
Madam Chair, can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
So I'm going to make you jealous, Will.
Okay.
I am headed to DC on Saturday for the National School Boards Association Conference, and I just got an email while we were sitting here that Secretary DeVos has been added as a guest speaker. Are you jealous?
I'm a little jealous now, yes.
It's going to be really cold up there, so I would let you take my place in a heartbeat.
Thank you. If no other comments, our next scheduled meeting of the board is on Tuesday, February 12th. There will be a board briefing meeting at 2:00 and a regular board meeting at 6:00. And if nothing else and no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move. Second.
Okay. Ms. Fisher and Ms. Juvenelli, and do we vote on that one?
Yes.
Okay. Is it up here, or we just do it?
No, you vote on the machine.
Okay.
It's not up there yet. Okay. And let me mention, too, while we're waiting for this, we will have our Plus Delta meeting in the back to discuss what went well and things that we can do better next time. It will be right in Room D, and you're welcome, please, to join us to kind of hear our feedback from it as well. And it also helps us with our accreditation piece to show that we are improving. Everyone voted?
It was unanimous.
Okay, it's unanimous. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.